Tonight is Thursday, June fifteenth, and tonight's meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. If anybody would like a copy, please contact one of the school committee members or a member of the administration. Our first order of business is approval of minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion from Jim, seconded by Scott. All in favor? Thank you. Our next order of business is announcements, correspondence, and distribution. So do we have any announcements or correspondence?
I know we finals, since high school started today, so just want to wish certainly a good luck to all the high school students as they enter into their finals. You know, and certainly also just, this is our last meeting before we head into the summer break, so just want to say thank you and congratulations to all of our students as well of all of our staff and faculty, some of who are here this evening for another fantastic year and another successful year. So congratulations and thank you guys for everything that you continue to do and have a happy and very safe, enjoyable summer.
Jen?
I just also wanted to thank the district. I know there were a number of technology-related meetings this week. I had the opportunity to attend the Screenagers showing the other night at Woodland, which was very, very well-attended with a great message. My eleven-year-old didn't think it was that great, but I didn't. I know the other parents in the audience did as well, so thank you for offering that to the community.
Thank you. Kim, do you have anything tonight?
I have a couple of quick ones, Joe. The first one, I just want to reiterate what Jen said about Screenagers. And I really want to thank Judy Dagnese, Amy Leoni, Tim Kiernan, Joe Greshen, and Lisa White, as well as the Woodland PTO for bringing the film and the panel together this past week. And the message that Jen was referring to was really about moderation in use of technology as well as setting limits for students, which I think are both very important lessons. And as we roll out the one-to-one across the district, I think it's a good kind of parallel conversation to have. And that leads me to the second piece, which is the digital one-to-one technology program was presented to parents at Stacy Middle School this week. And again, I want to thank Dr. Joseph and his team, which is Dan Nelson, Steve Weber, Sarah Boyle, Vin Elkazarin, and Elizabeth Warren, for presenting how the program works and how we're going to use technology, how we currently use technology in the classroom, and how we plan to leverage it in the future. There'll be a number of other meetings to give parents more information, as well as a number of professional development opportunities over the summer for teachers as well.
Good. And I want to congratulate the girls softball team on their big win this week and wish them the best of luck this weekend, so. And, all right. Any other announcements or correspondence?
Just, Joe, actually, on that, I know that there's been several emails and communications that have gone out from our athletic director as well. Just want to invite the public. I know that we're trying to get a good crowd together to come and root on our girls softball team as they head in. I believe it's Saturday?
Yes.
Is the game, Peter? What time?
Six PM.
Six PM at?
Worcester State.
At Worcester State. So certainly come one, come all. Bring your pom-poms and your loud voices to come and cheer on our Milford High School girls, so.
All right. Thank you. Our next order of business is invitation to speak. Do we have anyone here who'd like to address the board? All right. And next, we have recognition of the Milford Public Schools retiring teachers. Would you mind coming up? Welcome. How are you tonight?
Fine, thank you.
Good.
So this is always a bittersweet kind of a moment, especially, I've worked very closely with both Dave and Nancy over the years, and I'm definitely very sad to see both of them go. Nancy has been a health teacher in the Milford Public Schools for six years. She's also served as a curriculum team leader at the middle school level and high school level for health. And she's done a lot of work around curriculum, building the curriculum, particularly at the middle school level, as well as, she's done a number of great presentations for parents on a number of very sensitive topics. And we had a great turnout for a presentation you did on kind of the sex education program in the Milford Public Schools, which I think you handled kind of beautifully last year. I don't know, Nancy, if you want to share anything in terms of your career in Milford?
(laughing).
It's not that kind of a show, Nancy!
Kevin, we got to work on your script, fellas. Where the commas are going to go.
Well, I have taught for very many years, and I will say, it's just absolutely been a pleasure to be in this district. And although I haven't been here that long, it's just been a wonderful opportunity. Everybody I've worked with has just been wonderful. And I think the parents, and especially our kids, are just an absolute joy to work with.
What are your plans after retirement?
Well, I will probably be staying in education, but I also look forward to maybe working with veterinary.
Great. Excellent. And Dave Chaplin has been with us for eighteen years as a physical education teacher, most recently at the high school level. He's been a swim coach and a curriculum team leader for the physical education department. I had the opportunity, Dave put together a statewide swimming conference last year, and I actually knew a couple of the other coaches that were there, and they kept saying, "Oh, Chappie's a legend. He's a legend. He's a legend." And I heard that just repeatedly, and I had the opportunity, Dave introduced me to the coach of, it was the Georgia swim team. And he was raving about the program that Dave and his team put together. And I think it just shows you that not only was he phenomenal in the classroom, but he brought, you know, through coaching and through his work at the state level, a lot of recognition to the Milford Public Schools. And I think it's a program they're going to look, you're going to look to repeat in the future, because you're staying on as a coach, correct, for the swim team?
I am, yes, thank you. That's my intention.
All right. Excellent. So do you want to share some, maybe a couple of stories?
Well, it's actually longer than eighteen years. Scott was with me in the late seventies, I think, at Stacy School when I was there. I lived through a rift in two thousand and one. You guys are too young to remember Proposition Two and a Half, but that sent me to Florida for eight years. Came back, taught at Nipmuck. Craig's father was influential of helping me get that job up there, and his partner, Charlie Brucato, went from there, was rift from there also. Went to Blackstone, Millville. And Milford teachers Aldo Chaky and Tom Cullen, the superintendent here, were very helpful me moving there. And then Mike Britta welcomed me back to Milford. So it's all been about the people for a long time. The kids are always a focal part of everything. The teams that I coached, the successes we had, the kids that went off to great schools, and the people in the swimming community were great, and I'm looking forward to continuing with them. But it's, you know, nineteen fifty-nine was, I walked into the Memorial School the day it opened. Didn't call it kindergarten, then it was pre-primary.
Yeah.
And, you know, I remember my lockers that were there. We had a locker in fifth and sixth grade. I remember where I sat when Bill Bebo came in and told us the president had been shot. I could go to the cafeteria and sit where I sat in second grade with Barbara Burton Ozzy and know where we talked about the Cuban Missile Crisis. So it's been a long time. And you know it's time when one of your sophomore kids in an aquatic fitness class, you had her father coached her uncle, and as a sixth grade, as a sixteen-year-old, you taught the grandmother swimming in the Pheno field pool. So it's been great. I'm looking forward to it. My friend tells me that it's five, six Saturdays and a Sunday, but at two o'clock, I'll be here putting in lane lines. And looking forward to continuing there with all of you guys. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you.
Any comments? Questions? Jim?
I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for Milford Public. You know, it goes without saying that you've made a huge impact on the district. And Chappie, you certainly have made an impact on the district, the town, and the community, and we're glad you're sticking around. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep. So congratulations to you both, as well as, if we may, Mr. Chairman, just read off the other teachers that are also going to be retiring as well. Just, you know, congratulations certainly also to Kathy Bafallo. We've got Dave that's here. I can't call you David, it's Chappie. It's Coach for me. Gail Clark, Sue Delfanti, Nancy as well, and then certainly Tim Kelly. I've had an opportunity over, through being a student here, being raised in this town, and certainly now as a school committee member, to interact with each of these individuals. And some of them are my teachers, some of them are my coaches as well. And certainly to both of you and to all of you, congratulations and really thank you. Thank you as a student, thank you as a parent, thank you as a player, and thank you as a school committee member for everything that you've done. And Chappie, I'm really happy that you're going to continue. I, to be honest with you, as you walked in and was like, "Oh, I wonder what Chappie's here to talk about." And then I looked at the list and went, "Oh, no!" So I'm very happy to hear that you're going to continue on as a, with the swim program. You've done a phenomenal job, and certainly, there are people that I met swimming for you that I'm still friends with to this day. They're, you know, I'm godparents to their children, they're godparents to mine. We were in each other's weddings, and that started, you know, sort of in the pool.
If I may add, I hate to monopolize things, but when you hired Josh, I was so thrilled because he swam for me. When they first told me the name, I couldn't put a face to it. I couldn't figure out what, who it was. And then I finally dragged Jose Pinto to a computer, and he brought up his graduation picture. And I says, "He swam, he did the breaststroke, his time was a one oh six, twenty-five-four in the fifty-three." And it was like, bingo. So that's going to be a joy to me, and it's going to make me young again to work with Josh.
That's fantastic.
Congratulations on that hire.
So congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Jen?
Likewise, thank you both. I think you work in the most noble of professions, and in a profession where we've seen so many changes over the past few years, including the importance and the focus on health and wellness, and that's been obviously your passion and your contributions to students. I know it's helped them both physically and mentally, but academically as well. So thank you both.
Yeah, and I think it's all been said at this point, but thank you for your service to our students and to the community. You know, you certainly have made a lasting impression on many students over the years, and it's very much appreciated, so thank you.
Great. Thank you both.
All right. Thanks for coming in.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
And best of luck in the future.
All right. And next agenda item is Senator Fatman and Representative Murray. Thanks for coming, guys. I really do appreciate it. I know you both have very busy schedules, and the fact that you took time out of your day to come in means a lot to us. I definitely appreciate that.
Oh, no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for inviting us. So I know that the committee had looked for a little update on what's going on up on Beacon Hill, but in the meantime, from your request, Milford had a very remarkable, I think, second annual Celebrate Milford Day. And there were a large number of residents in the town who served as volunteers on that, of which you were a part of, Mr. Chairman. And it was very well-attended. There were a tremendous amount of vendors, very large crowds there. The weather was great. You were in charge of the weather, right?
Exactly. Actually, that was Pellegrini.
Oh, okay. So you got A-plus on that one. But, you know, and I was there for a good part of the day, and I was very impressed with the young Milford baseball players that were going around, basically doing everything that needed to be done, helping people, you know, carry the tables, the things that go into the booths, giving directions, just really making it happen. So it was one of your co-volunteers who suggested that we give them recognition, and I talked this to Senator Fatman, and it was very, very appropriate. You know, in today's world, where I think young people, I think, get criticized perhaps, maybe folks wonder really about the caliber of young people, anybody who has second thoughts needs to see the wonderful, remarkable young student athletes that get produced here at Milford High School, because they're a special bunch of guys. And, you know, it starts with the coach, and Coach Pellegrini was right there as well, guiding a lot of the action, driving the golf cart somewhat recklessly, but, you know, staying on the top for the most part, but, you know, really showing that kind of leadership, dedication, and teamwork that's a tremendous, tremendous example for your student athletes. So both of us are here tonight, before we talk about what's going on on Beacon Hill, to present citations to every one of the baseball players. And you had varsity, JV, and freshman kids that participated.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys want to come up and accept the citation? So I know there was a few conflicts tonight with Legion and Babe Ruth, so got a couple of the captains here.
I think we were told there was about twenty-five different conflicts for all of them.
I was going to say, Paul, you're doing a great job. You got some busy on the field.
So, okay, baseball players are meant to play.
That's right.
You know?
I brought out with me Aiden Wild, junior captain, Alex Mason, senior captain.
Okay. So captains, I'm going to put this in your custody, not the coaches. And these are citations for every one of your fellow ballplayers. Please extend my appreciation for the work they did on behalf of the town of Milford and the vendors. You did a great job.
Thank you, pal. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You did a great job. Congratulations.
I don't want to get into it.
No, no. Giving everyone fist bumps because I poison ivy on my breasts.
You don't want to get these guys in the disabled list.
No, definitely, definitely don't.
All right. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you guys leave, just real quick, I haven't had a chance to publicly thank
you guys either. I can't even put into words just how hard these kids worked that day. I mean, some of them showed up at seven o'clock in the morning and didn't leave till ten o'clock that night. They were literally there the entire day, and the feedback that we got from the community was overwhelmingly positive, not only about your work ethic, but I think what people really enjoyed seeing was how you were interacting with a lot of the younger kids in the community, whether it was, you know, playing football with them, playing basketball with them, just playing catch with them, and then monitoring all the jumpy houses, and the jumpy houses were chaotic. And you guys did an unbelievable job reining in some of that chaos. So, you know, I really appreciate it, and I wanted, I do also want to thank Paul and Peter for the work that they're doing with the baseball program and with the athletic program as a whole. You know, the work that Peter's doing with the leadership program and the work that you're doing to instill this sense of community in the athletes and the importance of volunteerism. You're really helping build character, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we also have a couple other awards. Peter, if you wouldn't mind coming up?
Just don't mind the attitude, Sid. You know, the MIA, three hundred and seventy-five schools in Massachusetts, right, three hundred and seventy-five high schools, so I just wanted to piggyback off this. They were also given the MIA Educational Athletics Achievement Award for community service, but it was for another community service at Memorial. So it wasn't even tied into their tremendous work at Milford Day, which, can I have three seconds on Milford Day?
Absolutely.
Coming from two other communities in my twenty-five-year history, one of them my alma mater, I'm blown away by Milford Day. And you had a lot to do with that. I know all of you did, and this seemed tremendously this year significantly. There aren't many communities that could pull off what Milford did and have that many people come out and do all the things that they do. I can tell you from my little town in Norfolk, we have Norfolk Day, it's over in about ninety minutes. It's nothing like that, and it's just, I feel lucky to be a part of this. My go-in joke is I was born here forty-six years ago, and then they, three days later, dragged me to Norfolk, and it took me about forty-two years to come back, so I'm excited to be back. But I absolutely love Milford Day. I love the fact that it's, you know, there's a second year, and it's going to continue. But the work these guys did, I brought my two kids, just chasing my two around, was difficult, but these guys chased hundreds of kids around and smiled the entire time. So, you know, hats off about that, but certainly, I'll give this to Coach Pellegrini, you know, you don't get these too often. You know, you're lucky to get one of these every couple of years. And the fact that they were recognized for what they, you know, their landscaping at Memorial Day, but I think what maybe the public doesn't know is that they do it every year, as long as Coach Pellegrini's been the coach, and maybe before that, but under his leadership and giving back to the community, you know, they were, they had, they're going to receive one of the largest and one of the most prestigious awards in the MIA, so I'll pass that off to you. Or should I give that to the kids, too? Are we, we're good with that? So congratulations to you guys and all the work that you do in our communities, because we're proud of that, and we really appreciate that, so. Well done. Good stuff.
Thanks, Coach.
Thanks, Peter.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good job. Good job.
All right.
So, Senator and I talked a little bit, and I know that you had asked about the budget. Well, both of I, both of us are as well. So as you probably know, the governor submitted his budget, the House theirs, and the Senate theirs. So right now, it's going through conference committee, and we'll see what comes out of that. So we don't have any real news on that. So I thought what may be of interest to the committee is a bill that the House passed last week, and this is an Act for Language Opportunity for Our Kids, which amends the ELL laws. So I have some copies here. If some reason George, just grab one and pass it down. And it, you know, came before the House, it's moving on to the Senate now. So what I'm providing you with is a summary of the bill, okay, and then a copy of the actual bill. So it's good, I think, to bring to your attention. Obviously, ELL is a significant factor in our district. And what this bill does is give greater flexibility to school districts to design their own alternative education, English-language learner, bilingual education, and get it approved by the state. So the idea is not for the state to tell the district a one-size-fits-all in terms of ELL. Rather, the state is looking for the particular district to say, "This is the student demographic that we have. We think these kinds of programs would work best in our community, and this is how we propose to go forward in doing it." I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, or?
So it's obviously been an issue that has been in front of Milford and actually a growing issue in my district in general. When you look at Bellingham, BMR, other school districts that you wouldn't even expect, maybe like a Douglas, you've seen an upshot in ELL students. So the Senate has not taken up yet this bill. I would imagine will do so before July first, probably the last week of June. But one of the things I think is most significant and perhaps that you should pay attention to that was a part of this bill was a seventeen-member task force of stakeholders involved, some legislators, educators, municipal, you know, level superintendents, and, you know, their responsibility for kind of crafting a larger, broader vision that will be integrated into Chapter Seventy review formula and what that will look like. You know, this is a conversation, every budget since I've been in the Senate, three budgets, we have a meeting with the Chairwoman of Ways and Means about two, three weeks before, and she says, you know, "What are your priorities?" Every year, I have said, "We need to do something about ELL." The reason is, by, I believe, twenty twenty-eight, it's going to be about thirty percent of the entire statewide school population. It's the fastest-growing population of students in Massachusetts. So this is significant. And, you know, there's also a lot of challenges, as you know, that come with that. So I would pay attention to the stakeholder task force. I think it's a significant part of the legislation. Our Senate bill will probably be a little different. They always are. You know, different people, different ideas. There hasn't been a lot of conversation about this in the Senate just yet. Most of our conversation's been actually about marijuana and putting together the rules and regulations from the ballot initiative. So as things progress, we'll be sure to let you know. Just as a backdrop, I think, you know, when we were coming in, Brian and I were talking about the budget, and there's just a huge question mark. You've probably followed, the state revenues have not kept up with projection. They were projected to grow around three-point-nine percent for this budget year. Well, we've fallen about four-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars short of that, which is pretty significant. And going forward, you know, hopefully, maybe we'll catch up in the month of June a little bit. We caught up a little bit in the month of May, but we're not going to catch up by hundreds of millions of dollars. So inevitably, that means when we are looking forward to the next budget, which we just worked on, that's going to complicate and compound the problem. You know, as a backdrop of some of the issues that aren't necessarily directly related to education, but they're related because it's a forty-billion-dollar holistic budget. You have a six-hundred-million-dollar gap right now in the mass health program, you know, which is being discussed on how we're going to solve that. And on top of it, if you've been paying attention to the Boston Globe reporting at all, you know, the MBTA's pension fund is a significant issue. One-point-five billion in assets, you know, about a hundred million dollars getting paid out annually. And the state is subsidizing this to the rate of about eighty-seven million dollars a year. That's significant money. And, you know, who knows? Every eight to ten years, we have an economic recession based on trends. We're right in that range right now. People say that if this fund's assets were depleted, it may be a disaster financially. And there is question whether or not the state is on the hook to make up for any losses in that fund. So when you're looking at one-point-five billion dollars, and you consider the fact that Chapter Seventy total is like four-point-two billion dollars, it's a significant problem. So these are some of the challenges that we're going to face, you know, the governor is going to face, the legislature's going to face, and I know we're committed to working together to try to solve them.
And along those lines, obviously, as you mentioned, there's a revenue problem at the state level. I think I did read that, I can't remember if it was the House or the Senate, but someone advanced a ballot question in two thousand and eight to impose some type of surtax on compensation above and beyond a million dollars. I think it was a four-percent surtax, and that additional revenue would be earmarked for, I believe, education and infrastructure.
Right. We took that vote yesterday, as a matter of fact. It was a constitutional convention, and what you're talking about is what they call the Fair Share Amendment, which has been advocated for by a number of groups, including the MTA. And that's exactly it. It would put on the ballot for November of eighteen for the voters to decide whether or not there would be an income tax assessed on personal income over a million dollars, and that part of income over a million dollars would be subject to a four-percent surcharge. And that four, that the money collected would be spent only for education and transportation. So that passed yesterday. That will proceed to the ballot. You know, but if that goes forward, that's obviously not going to provide any relief for, assuming it passes, it's not going to provide any benefits for FY eighteen. But it's a huge step. It's, again, a lot of the groups that are very concerned about education are very interested in that, and are very, very vocal for it.
Scott?
Thank you, gentlemen, both, for taking some time. I know how busy you guys are, and I think this is the fourth time I've seen you in the last, like, two weeks, so. You seem to be everywhere, which is great.
We're sorry.
That's fine. I'll accept your thank you.
I think that's more if my wife has seen me.
I'm sure. The, you know, and I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. Certainly, the ELL piece is certainly, you know, near and dear to my heart. It's something that, you know, Brian, you and I had had conversations with, about, and Ryan, you and I had had conversations about even before you, when you were still a board of selectmen member and when you were newly elected to that, to the Senate. One of the questions I have on that, so you mentioned, you know, by twenty, I think you said, the number you said was twenty-twenty-eight, it's expected to be about forty, roughly forty percent.
Thirty, I think.
About thirty percent of the student population. We have years where our increase is more than that, just in the town of Milford, to understand sort of what the impact is here. I know you both follow Milford, obviously, very closely. It's a huge, huge piece, and sort of as, I was very pleased to see the seventeen-member working group and some of the people that were on there. You've got, you know, English-language learners, directors from different school districts, superintendents of schools, so it's nice to see executive directors of certain groups that are on there. However, I'm much more impressed when it's actually, the closer to the classroom and the students we can get them, the better. So I was very pleased to see that. Do you see that this is going to, the biggest challenge, as you guys both know, because we've talked about it in the past, but just to reiterate, one of the biggest challenges that we face is, the way the funding is done, is that it's not even so much the formula as much as it is the timing. That's really what we face. The timing, the timing challenge that we face is that we have students that show up the first day of school, so for argument's sake, we'll call it September first. And we're going to start educating those students. It's the right thing to do. It's, they're kids, and the moment they walk into the town of Milford, they're our kids. But we gotta pay for it. And when we submit our numbers and we're submitting that back for funding, it's always in the rears. As you guys know, that's the way budgets work. Because we're seeing years where the increase can be, you know, certainly double, well into the double digits. It's tough to keep pace with. You talked about the gap at the, at the, at the state level from a, from a funding perspective. That gap is so significant. As you guys are putting this together, you talked about possible shifts in Chapter Seventy. Anything that can be possibly put through. I know that Representative Fernandez had put forth a bill, and Ryan, I believe you'd, you'd signed on with that one as well, where there was almost, for lack of a better term, there was an interim application, where you could actually, if a town saw an increase in excess of a certain percentage of their ELL population year over year, the town could actually effectively, I, I don't think the word was petition the state, but really go to the state and say, hey, we're looking for some relief. Is there any, and I haven't had a chance to obviously dig through the entire bill and the details, do you foresee something like that being included within this? I don't believe the bill that Representative Fernandez put through ultimately is able to, ultimately was passed.
Yeah, I think you're kind of referring to a circuit breaker bill, and I believe-
It was similar to that.
Yeah, I believe, for, for ELL. And, and I believe that there are a number of those that have been filed, and, and, you know, we may have signed on to them. This is not a money bill. This is more of a philosophical, I think that this is good news, being a former school committee member, you know, I, I think you can appreciate this. This is not the state directing you what to do, it's the reverse. It's the state saying, you know, what kind of situation do you have? How can you best handle it and track the information? So hopefully-
And I appreciate the release of handcuffs on that, but certainly the funding piece is gonna be critical too.
Well, y- y- you know, there's, there's no question about that. But, you know, as Senator indicated, you know, that there are constraints at the budget level, but, you know, there are funding bills as well. This particular bill is, is not a money bill. And, and in Milford, I, I know, it, it's not even that you have one particular language that you're talking about. It's, it's all over the charts, which has to be tremendously difficult to try to administer and fit into the guidelines from Department of Ed. So I, I think what you're seeing, at least the sense that I'm getting, is a changing realization on things like this, on standardized testing, on, on, you know, top-down curriculum directives. It's, it's, it's a recognition that, you know, it, it should be more organic, it should be more bottom-up as opposed to top-down.
And I, and again, I, as a school chairman, we've sat with, I always wanna call her Lancaster, and I know it's not. Mrs. Norwegianian, she recently got married. But, a- and she does an amazing job. And, and certainly, the, the more freedom we can give individuals like that, like I said, my, my flavors, my favor is always to, the closer to the classroom we can get, they're making the decision, they're become the decision-makers of how to educate our children. I'm absolutely in favor of, so I'm very appreciative that this bill went through, Brian, to your, you know, to your point. More as, as an additional caveat, it's just continuing to, continuing to pound on, you know, using the opportunity to talk about that funding piece too. Because I, again, this is huge from a curriculum piece, that's sort of the second half.
So that, the reason why I highlighted that task force is I think at some point they'll be charged withholding public hearings and going to certain parts of the state. Love to have them in Milford, but they usually have a forum in central Mass. And so they, they try to be geographically balanced. This is a great point to bring up, it's a point we've advocated for. And the question will be, you know, where does that money come, as it always is? But it's definitely necessary. I had the privilege, this past year, I, I didn't get a chance to go due to scheduling, but, um, and I don't know exactly what it's called, but I believe it's Kurt Shady who puts it on. It's like a festival of nations. And beyond just like, you know, the facts and figures of ELL and, and sort of the challenges that it poses, it also shows you, you know, this festival of nations shows you the opportunity. Last year, I met a young girl who had just come over from the Dominican Republic. I think she had been in the United States, I think she was probably ten, eleven, twelve, somewhere in that range. And she didn't speak a word of English when she came here. And I was able to, in a limited capacity, but I was able to converse with her after she'd been here for about ten weeks, which I think is a credit to the Milford school system and the faculty, because they brought her along. But, you know, people like that, and she left a, a bad situation, in my understanding, deserve opportunity. And that's what state law demands, you know, and, and then they tell you, you need to do it. So, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure we figure this out, so in the long term, well before we get to twenty twenty-eight, you know, that there's some solutions. The second thing I just wanted to mention is Melissa King is the director in the Department of Early and Secondary Education of, of the School Funding Formula. And I actually invited her out tonight in Uxbridge, and she was holding a forum, and I asked her, I said, I'm going to Milford a little bit later on, we were together at five thirty. And I said, you know, it'd be, I think they'd really appreciate it if you'd be willing to come and present, go through the Chapter Seventy formula, go through the Foundation Review Commission, and talk about the various points. Because one thing, Scott, you said was about, you know, enrollment, and I just, I went right to the funding formula for Chapter Seventy. And like, one of the biggest problems we face as a state, the reason why Chapter Seventy is somewhat of a problem is largely based on per pupil enrollment, right? So enrollment dictates the funding and, almost universally, and enrollment in, in Massachusetts is dropping. And so that's caused a huge challenge, especially in my district, sort of the middle-income, more suburban, but kind of rural communities, like, these are huge challenges. They don't have the industrial and commercial base to support their school system necessarily, it's largely residential. So I think, you know, having her come out and give a presentation, maybe for forty-five minutes, an hour, would be hugely beneficial. Perhaps we do that in the fall, as we get closer to, you know, chipping away at actually achieving the Foundation Review and doing something with it legislatively.
Yeah, that, that'd be fantastic. And that's really our, our, our goal, is to start having more of a dialogue with you regarding what's happening at, at the state level. To have those conversations so that we can then in turn provide you with information that you could use to advocate for, for, for the, for the district. And, you know, the, the Foundation Budget obviously has a number of recommendations, right? And one of the big ones that is always talked about is healthcare, and every community is dealing with that same challenge, that's not unique to Milford. What is unique to Milford is the, the, the increase in the high-needs population. We talk a lot about ELL, but that's just one component, right? There's also the special ed population, there's a low-income population, and there's some recommendations in, in that, in the Foundation Budget Review, the Bud, Foundation Budget Review Commission that would specifically benefit Milford, whether it's the increased funding for ELL, the increased funding for S P E D, the increased funding for, for the low-income students. So those are the kind of things that would benefit us, and I think if we share specific information for, for Milford, that will arm you with, with more information to advocate for us. And as far as this bill is concerned, I, the, I, I was very happy to see this. So today we have an inclusion model for ELL, and, and growing up, I, I was a bilingual student. So, you know, I'm happy to see that we now have the flexibility, potentially have the flexibility to incorporate a bilingual education within the district, because there are some advantages to learning a subject like math in your native language, right? So you're not overcoming those, those language barriers, and you're able to, to excel there. So I think having that flexibility is, is, is critical, and I think will benefit a community like Milford.
Our, our, as we talked about during our budget season, which is, to your point, Ryan.
The student population, you're right, is, we're seeing enrollment numbers. In Milford, it's, it's amazing how consistent it is. Brian, you can, you've seen this being, being a little official.
It's still about four thousand.
Yeah, so we, we're, we're a little over. And we average, believe it or not, we average about one extra student for the entire district a year from like the mid nineteen sixties through like last year. The average is one, we add one a year.
Enrollment stayed very static in Milford.
That's, yeah, that's how steady we are. It's, it averages about one a year extra. Now, there's years where it's ten, there's years where it's minus three, but it averages out. If you look at our student population back from the mid-sixties up until current day, we average adding about one student a year. It is very, very consistent.
So I, I remember, it's always remained about four thousand. I go back, you know, I, I, I don't know, there's something wrong with me, but I mean, I have my papers from when we did Stacy School. So that was back in the early nineties. And I go back and look at the enrollment projections for twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, it was up over five, six thousand.
Right, and we're nowhere near that.
Those projections weren't right.
Yeah, but what we're finding-
But that's what we dealt with in nineteen ninety, you know.
And what we're finding, though, is, is it's not so much the enrollment changes, it's that the student population that currently exists is becoming more expensive to educate, for a variety of reasons. Some, some of them have to do with the additional services that Joe talked about, and we've talked about through, through this bill as well as some others. To your point, Brian, i- it's not one particular language. We, we've got certain languages that, you know, I, I continue to take my hat off to the educators in every town, but certainly here in Milford. We have languages that are being worked, that students that speak languages, there is no written version of their language. They're purely spoken. I, I can't even imagine what that must be like to try and overcome, both from a student population, from a student perspective as well as from a teacher. But there, whether it's the specialized programs, technology, all the other things that are coming along that are, they're, it's becoming a, it is a more expensive job now to educate our students, and, and they're becoming a more expensive population, even though the population is relatively stagnant. We have a, we have an ongoing, we'll call it healthy dialogue, as we go through our budget process every year, that just talks about that. It's, you know, but your student population is similar, yeah, but they're way more expensive to educate today than they were five years ago.
And, and that was what always impressed me about Milford, and I know that it's increased even since, since I've been involved, the, the diversity of the diversity, if, if you will. You don't just have Spanish-speaking students, you know, you have Spanish-speaking students of different dialects, at different levels, and then you have the whole host of other languages like you referred to. Tremendously challenging, tremendously challenging. So, I mean, I guess, at least at the state level, this is kind of a recognition of that. Hopefully, it's the start of, of taking the handcuffs off the local districts, allowing more freedom to recognize what you have to deal with and how you can best do it with your staff and resources. I can't thank you guys enough. The only other thing that I have that I'll leave with you, this is just a preliminary, well, it's preliminary in the sense of the budget. This is a summary of the House budget for the education line items. So it's, it's something you can take a look at, you can see the various line items and the increases that came. But the caveat is that it is all subject to further negotiations, so, uh, but at least it's, it's what we had come up with out of the House.
Yeah, this is, this is great. And Kevin and Kathy, did you want anything that you wanted to run by them?
Yeah, Kathy, do you wanna share, this is more of a federal issue, but I'd, I'd love to hear the two of you weigh in on it. There's, they're talking about Medicaid reimbursement, which is, which has a significant impact. Kathy, do you wanna share kind of our Medicaid reimbursement?
This year and last year, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand reimbursement back to Milford. And then the three years prior to that, we averaged about two hundred and fifty thousand. So it significantly has grown in the last two years, but we have been getting significant emails from the M A S S that it's at risk for losing its funding at the federal level.
Sure, this is all what you're seeing, this American Healthcare Act. And, and if this goes through at the federal level, you can take everything off the table, because states everywhere are gonna be scrambling to plug in the holes in their budgets. You know, right now, on a broad scheme of things, the federal matching funds are about fifty percent of, of Medicaid. So what the administration is looking to do is to go to a block grant, which supposedly would make it better. We'll give you the money without any, you know, strings attached, and you can do what you want with it. But the catch is, it's substantially less money. So that's, that's kind of the, the outgrowth and the danger of this, this American Care Act that's being bandied around. It's a huge, I know the governors, you know, are, are very apprehensive about it, all states are. I think Massachusetts, to be honest, would probably be better positioned than most states, but it still would be devastating. Devastating across the board.
I think up to two billion. Yeah, two billion, I think, is, is abo- approximately the total funding, which is, it's a lot of money.
Right.
So that's, that's, that's the huge, huge fear that I think all of us have.
All right, well, we'll let you guys get back to your-
Can we end on an upper note, is this a, we're talking about the softball girls.
We gotta end on a good note here.
I, I really appreciate you, you taking the time to, to come in, and appreciate all your work you're doing to advocate for, for, for Milford. It definitely doesn't go unnoticed, I know you guys work really hard and put in a lot, a lot of time. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can continue to have these types of conversations going forward. We'd love to have that person in to talk a little bit more about the Chapter Seventy. So we really need to educate ourselves on what's happening at the state level so that we can start to focus our efforts on the things that are gonna benef- benefit Milford over the long term. So the more we can educate ourselves on, on what's happening, the, the, the better we can serve the town of Milford.
Yeah, that, that presentation, I think, is an excellent idea, and Nipmuck had one. Craig, you were at.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I thought that was very informative.
Yeah, that was with the commissioner.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Excellent, well, if you'd like, just moving forward on that, if you wanna send us maybe a few dates in the fall, we can pass them along to Melissa and see if she could come out. And perhaps even, you know, make a little bit of a larger production, have some other school districts come, just so, I think it'd benefit a lot of people.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great.
Great.
All right, thanks again for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Nice to come back home.
Sure, give me a home paper.
That's right, sure.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item, Carl, I think you're up, school breakfast price proposal. Thanks for sticking, sticking around.
No problem, thanks for having me. So I expressed to Kevin about just raising our school breakfast price. Um, it's been a dollar twenty-five for the fifteen-plus years, and with the rising cost of the whole grains and getting all those breakfast items to our students, I feel an increase for our paid kids for, for a quarter. So I'm asking to increase for a quarter. Most towns surrounding us are charging one fifty to one seventy-five. This will bring us up to the one fifty, a dollar fifty. I think it's still a great deal in town.
Yeah.
Uh, to get a, a, a healthy breakfast for a dollar fifty for these, for our kids. So I'm just asking your thoughts and your blessings.
You can't get a coffee for a dollar fifty. That's not a bad deal at all.
Well, you can a couple in farms, but that's about it. You see that commercial?
All right. Yeah.
So Carl, I know with, with our lunch, and, and it's still a phenomenal deal, and I'm, I'm overall very, very supportive of that. I know with our lunch prices, we're driven at a, we're driven by regulation as far as what we're able to charge, what we're not able to charge.
Equity in lunch pricing.
Correct.
Right.
Is this, this is an impact or anything like that on that? I know there's only so much we can raise on those, this, this is fine, right?
Right, this isn't impacted by that, that's just for lunch only.
That's all I needed to hear, thank you.
All right, so any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the increase from a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty? Motion from Jen, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And please come in, well, next year and have breakfast, because we're just about to do this year. Join us, we'd love to have you come in and, and have lunch or breakfast with our students. They, they always ask if, you know, special events to come in, and, uh, the doors are always welcome and open for you, okay?
Excellent.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Barnak, Milford High School presentation.
So in, in, I would ask, um, if it's okay with the committee, if I could reshuffle the order a little bit of our presentation and ask, um, Ms. Alagretza and Mr. Rualis to come first, because that way they could talk about the, um, limitation that we've received for the global citizenship students, and then we could go into our school improvement plan and so forth, is that okay?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So I welcome, um, welcome Ms. Alagretza and Mr. Rualis. So, um, we were informed just, just this week.
Yes.
That our, um, global citizenship program has caught the attention
Yes.
of, um, of organizers around the nation, and, um, we have been invited to a very special event in New York City in September. And I asked Ms. Alagretza and Mr. Rualis to come today to talk a little bit about this event and, um, share their knowledge of it, to the extent that they, they know right now, because again, it's all pretty new, to talk about what, what an amazing opportunity it would be for our students in the global citizenship program, so thank you.
Yeah, so you guys know that this year, um, we launched the global citizenship program at Milford High School. We talked about that back in the fall. And we've had a great year, we've had a couple successes. We had a tremendously successful film screening of the movie Girl Rising. We did a flag-raising ceremony for the students who were born outside of the United States here in the library. And we also started a partnership with this organization that is funded by Allstate called WE. And because we, and we had some WE speakers come and do a training for the global citizenship students. Because we earned a certain amount of money with, through fundraising, and we did a globally-focused fundraiser as well as a locally-focused fundraiser, we were invited to this very special event that's called WE, WE Day. I'm going to let Alejandro explain that, because he actually, uh, attended a We Day when he was a college student.
Yeah, so, um, let's see. When I was a student, I went to this thing called We Day. And the best way, I guess, I can kinda express or say kind of what it is, is it's kind of like a Super Bowl. Imagine like a stadium just full of thousands of kids who are all kind of excited and passionate about kind of just changing the world. Okay, on top of that, we have a bunch of, a bunch of amazing speakers. Um, last year there was Arnie, Arnie Duncan, I think, so like Obama's Secretary of State. Uh, Eli Wazelle was there when he was still alive. Um, last year I think Martin Luther King the third, so MLK Junior's son, right, was there? So all these amazing people globally recognize people having these amazing messages for these students. Um, on top of that, kind of sprinkled with a bunch of like pop stars, so I don't know what your musical preferences are, but Jonas Brothers, Justin Bieber have all been there.
Joe's a big Jonas Brothers fan.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, yeah, these kids, yeah, these kids get very excited about these kind of things. And I think it's a great reward for all this amazing stuff they've done at MHS and in Milford this past year, but also an amazing opportunity as a kickoff event for the next year to kind of get them excited about it. So, um, and there, I guess about logistics, it's in New York, so I think we're trying to plan for like just a day trip, right?
Yeah, so, uh, we've been invited to attend this event. The event is entirely free. In fact, Allstate gave us a, a small grant for the students to kind of thank them for their work and help us, um, build new initiatives with the program. Um, so we've been invited, it's September twentieth. It's a daytime event. It goes from nine o'clock in the morning, so we would have to leave Milford High School very early. Um, and it ends at two PM, so we'd get back sometime in the evening. Uh, I've called, I've only called one charter bus academy that I've worked with, with the exchange students before. Um, they quoted me a price of eight hundred dollars. That would be the only cost. We ha- do have some money in our treasury, so we'd like to use the, the two hundred and fifty grant that, um, that Allstate gave us, as well as a couple other hu- a couple hundred dollars that we earned from Girl Rising, and, um, kind of offset the cost. So the cost, I can't say exactly what it will be per student, because of course it's subdivided. It depends on how many students decide that they'll ultimately go, but when we, we measured out, it looks like it'll be somewhere between twenty-five and forty.
So, I mean.
Sure.
So what's the total cost that you're, that you're looking at?
Per, per student?
Total cost.
The total cost is eight hundred dollars.
So the total cost is eight hundred, and you've got two fifty from Allstate, which you're gonna offset that with, and then how much from the Girl Rising?
I think there, in our treasury, there's also some money from a, a previous club. I think there's like four fifty.
Okay.
And I would offer too that, um, we could supplement some of that with some of the gift, um, money that the school receives from Target and so forth, because the other consideration I think would be, um, uh, meals, food, right?
Yes, yeah. So, uh, yeah, often we would have the kids bring, you know, like a, a bagged lunch, and then we would probably, yeah, we'd stop someplace and get, yeah.
Get some snacks, yeah.
Or sometimes we, I've had Carla, you know, she'll wrap up some sandwiches and different things, and we'll bring them. It's a little less expensive that way.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, so the total cost, you're saying eight hundred, you've got two fifty from Allstate, then four fifty from Girl Rising. Which only with the total cost of about a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That you gotta come up with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Any other questions or comments?
Sounds like a great opportunity.
Interesting. That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thanks, we're excited.
So do you need a, a vote then, by the committee to approve?
We would need your approval.
For our state travel. Okay, right, motion from Scott, seconded by Jim. All in favor? Fantastic.
Okay, awesome. We're excited. Thank you so much.
So much.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's, uh, it, it, it's great, great to hear, um, that you're being recognized for all the work that, that, that's happening with this program.
Yeah, it's exciting. The kids are excited.
It's a very innovative program, and it's, uh, it's just one of many, right? When you look at what we're doing with the hospitality management program, the banking program, they can talk about in a minute, what Pete's doing from an athletic side with the leadership program, and, and now this global citizenship program. So there's a lot of great things that are happening here that unfortunately don't always get recognized, um, and it's something that we really should celebrate, so thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, maybe you've gotten a lot of applications for next year, so look out for next year.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
And I, I would also add too that the, the teachers who participate in, um, the GCP, there are six teachers, and they all volunteer their time. That, it's not a stipend position or anything like that. They have organized and, uh, taken this on to provide this great opportunity for the students, so to be commended for that as well. Thank you. All right, so at this time then, I would, um, like to, um, invite Mr. Bayon to come up, and we could move into the, um, the presentation, the discussion on the, uh, graduating class of two thousand seventeen, which, uh, was a remarkable class.
Yes, it was, yes.
We're very proud of them and, uh, their accomplishments and successes. So we'll, uh, we'll begin, I believe you have in front of you, um, a report, um, that, uh, outlines, um, the college acceptances and placements and so forth, and I'll let Mr. Bayon talk a little bit about, um, the data and
Sure.
the gathering of this. As you know, we have NAVYOTS, and we're able to collect all this data through our NAVYOTS, um, College and Career Management Program.
Um, thank you, um, for inviting me. I, I look forward to this every year to talk about the graduating class, and as Carrie said, this was a very successful and remarkable class. Um, we had, we, out of this class, we have three students going to Ivy League schools. One to Harvard, one to Yale, and one to Princeton. Um, last year we had one student go to Harvard. That was the first time in, in many years, um, that we'd had any students going to two Ivy League schools. To have, sort of have, to keep, follow that up with three more students is, is, uh, is excellent, and we, and we look forward to that. Opening doors for many of our students in the future. Uh, more students from this year were accepted to some of the most competitive schools in the country than last year. Um, also, students were accepted into more colleges and universities throughout the country, and we have more students attending colleges outside of Massachusetts than last year. Um, so it was a very successful year, um, but we are knowledgeable of the fact that our, our four-year, our four-year institution, um, where students are going decreased from last year. So I, there are a number of factors, I think, that, that I want to talk about, um, and we can discuss and answer many questions about. One of the factors I would say is, um, the affordability and access. Um, with the growing cost of higher education, putting a strain on students and families. Um, this is across the state, across the country. This is not just, um, unique to Milford. This average student debt that students are leaving school with is thirty thousand dollars, um, and that's the average. Um, students are, are looking into different avenues, and they're do- looking to, for different ways to pay for college. Um, we're seeing our students be a lot more thoughtful, a lot more sa- savvy, um, and very creative in the way that they're finding ways to go to school. Um, so whether that's, um, going right into the workforce, saving money and going to school later on, whether it's going into the military first, attending college on the GI Bill, uh, which is worth over sixty thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars, going into career training programs, getting real life experience, um, to have a more directive way, um, of what they want to major in. Um, so one of the, one of the facts that we look at every year that gets updated is, is how many students go to college, um, that change their major. That, that number is eighty percent. Eighty percent of kids who are going into school these days are changing their major at least once. The majority of students are changing their majors at least three times. So, that ability for, um, students to be able to, to experience more, to get life experience, and then to go into college, we're seeing as a major factor, um, that, one of the factors of, uh, the four-year, um, institution, um, attendance going down. You know, there are a few programs that we have this year. The HDM program was, was just mentioned, um, in the last presentation. Um, we have many students going from the HDM program into college, but we also have students going in.
Does this benefit the people watching at home? Will you avoid acronyms?
Yes, sure, sure.
Describe, describe it out at least once, so people who are watching at home can understand what that is.
No problem. Thank you for that, Scott. Um, so the HCM program is the Hospitality Tourism and Management Program. Um, this is the third year that it has been running. Um, and we have students who are going into college, majoring in hospitality and tourism and management, but students who are also going into the workforce. It's opening different avenues for them, different opportunities. Uh, we have the Early College Program that we started this year with Framingham State University. Uh, we've had three courses that have been offered on campus here, um, that our students are, are going and getting college credit. Um, some, there are many repeat students also, um, so there are some students who will, at the end of this year as a junior, they could have three, three courses going right into college. Um, at a, at a state school, that could be, you know, anywhere from a thousand to three thousand dollars a course. Um, so they're saving a lot of money. Um, and this is a, a partnership with the Metro West Planning, College Planning Center that has been, um, really great. Uh, the Commonwealth Commitment and Mass Transfer Program, that's a new program that, um, Massachusetts and the Department of Education, um, rolled out this year. Um, what's the, what that's doing is enabling students to get their bachelor's degree at a reduced rate, um, at all, any of our state and, uh, colleges and universities. Um, so that is enabling students to go to, into our community colleges, um, for two, two and a half years, and then to transfer into bachelor's programs. Um, there's a list of, uh, ma- a few dozen majors that students can go right into. Um, and there are different avenues that students can get into the Commonwealth Commitment Program for. Um, I would also add, I think our counselors are getting much more, um, training, and they're, um, helping to counsel students and parents to go into these different avenues and offering these different opportunities. Um, so I think we're doing a good job of getting out all of this information, um, but we, there's still work to do, and I think that we could, we could still be doing more. Before I end, I just want to offer a few trends. So these are trends in college admissions that we're seeing here at Milford. We're also seeing, um, in this area. Um, so I'm, I'm on a, a guidance director's group, and there's a lot of information shared with many of the area schools. Um, so there are a few different, um, admissions programs. So, at, at our senior night, we talked about the Early Action Program and the Early Decisions Program, EA and ED. Um, so, the Early Decision Program is, is a binding program. So it's mainly for students who have a very directed school that they want to go to. They would apply to those schools. Um, usually one school, and those are highly selective schools. There's now a, a second early decision, um, round that's been created over the past three years. So there's ED one now, and there's ED two. Um, so we're seeing a big increase in students applying for those. Um, it's a, it's a good opportunity for students, but we're also seeing is this is a way for colleges to increase their yield. This is a way for them to increase the amount of students that they're accepting in. Um, so it isn't always advantageous for our students to apply to that, but we're seeing that go up, um, across Massachusetts. Um, there's an increase in, in waitlist numbers, the students, um, who are applying to colleges that are going on waitlists. Um, one of the shifts in counseling that we've talked about is kind of treating these waitlists as denials, because we're seeing less and less students come off of those waitlists and be accepted into colleges. The, there was a, a mention by the Senator about the population in the northeast shrinking. Even though the population is streaking, is shrinking, and our, our workforce is shrinking, we're still the most applied to area in the country. Um, our colleges are, our colleges that students want to go to from across the United States, from across the world even. So that, that lifts, that, that increases the competition that our students are, are going into. Um, and one more, there, there's an increase in the college recruiting of international students also. Um, we're seeing that, um, increase for colleges. One of the things is that many international families can pay full pay. So they will pay that tuition. It's a way for colleges to guarantee that they're getting that full tuition paid. Um, so this is another factor that's going into, um, the competition for our, our students applying to those four-year schools. Um, so I, I can open it up to any questions. I don't know, Carrie, if you wanted to add a few things?
What I, what strikes me is the, um, the, there's an increase in students attending community college, and that I believe is strongly linked to a statewide initiative, um, with the Commonwealth Commitment, which is also linked to the early college high school programs. They're, they're all, they're all partnering together, and, um, a lot of this is about access, affordability, and completion. That those are three key elements, um, for higher ed, because they want to provide access to students, particularly students who are under, underrepresented, first generation students, economically disadvantaged students. They want to provide, um, the pathway for students to know how to manage the process of applying to college, which is a very complicated process. Um, getting into colleges is one thing, just getting through the common application, all the testing, writing the essays, getting the recommendations, I mean, it, it's a complete job unto itself, and it's quite a challenge, um, for all students, let alone a student who's first generation, who, whose parents have not been through this process, um, who, who may be economically disadvantaged, um, and underrepresented. So, our work with the Metro West College Planning Center, um, has been tremendous this year. In fact, we have one of, um, the staff members from Mass Bay who also works at the Metro West College Planning Center here in the building a few times a week, uh, Ms. Reyes. And she's working directly with our students on the process of applying to college, on participating in our early college high school program, on educating the students on the, um, the Commonwealth Commitment, because there were three choices. And, and the, and the three choices are complicated, and, and trying to help students find the right, the right pathway for them. Um, so, students, um, who enter community college, so, so one of the pathways is, you go to community college, you complete sixty credits, you can transfer all of the credits over to any of the state university or, um, state school systems, and you're going to save forty percent on your bachelor's degree ju- just right there. Now, if the student has a two point O at the time of the transfer, there's a guarantee of the transfer credits, there's no application fee, and there's no essay. So they're, so they're taking that right off the table. If a student has a two point five, guaranteed university admission, as opposed to guarantee of transfer of credits. Two di- two different thresholds of a GPA, two different options for that student. Student has a three point O, they get the mass transfer tuition credit, plus the students get a freeze on their, on the tuition at the time of acceptance. So, the following year, if the tuition goes up at UMass, Worcester State, the tuition doesn't go up for that student. And the student gets a ten percent, um, rebate at the end of the semester for main- for maintaining. So that's, that's one of the three options for students who are making a, who, who are working with, um, the, uh, Commonwealth Commitment through participation at the associate's degree, uh, level. And, and our kids are able to back into that because they're taking the classes here now, earning credits that would apply to, to all of these programs. So, there, there is a big statewide, um, initiative with this, and again, it, going to access affordability and completion, because retention at the college level i- is very important. Bringing in students who are not ready, who do not have the skills to be successful. Um, and, and a lot of times these skills are, um, organizational skills, forecasting skills, stamina, um, reaching out for help when you need that and so forth, and so backing that into the high school through our work with Erica Reyes, um, and Colleen Coffey, um, from Framingham State University. It starts the process much earlier. We have some sophomores in, in our early college high school classes. So, so, and, and part of the, um, participation in that program is a trip to Framingham State and/or Mass Bay. So the students actually spend, um, at one of their class times, the classes are four hours long. So, we work with Framingham State to have a field trip, so they go to the, the college, um, to attend classes, to get a tour of the campus. They have dinner with the students at the colleges and so forth. So it's a, it's a comprehensive process of, um, helping students to really start thinking about their future and providing them a pathway to it as well, with a, with a lot of support. So, I think, um, I think that we'll probably continue to see some increase in, in community college admissions with the intention of earning what is referred to, um, as bucket credits. Credits that you have to earn to attend any of the state or university, um, schools, but that you can earn through our early college high school program at no cost. Or you could go to Quin- uh, Mass Bay or Quincy or any of the community colleges at a, at a fraction of what that, that mandatory freshman course would cost you at, at, um, any of the state or university programs. So, um, so it's a, it's a great opportunity, great opportunity for students, so.
Question, Scott?
Um, a couple of quick questions for you. So I did notice that in the presentation that, um, it looks like the shift, the, the majority of the students that, you know, and when I see the shift and the trend from, um, where we were in sixteen, and just, you know, just a short year later, that ten percent drop in the pers- in, in the folks. You know, eight of them, eight percent of that moved over to the, to your school, so you're, you're, you're dead on on that. Some information, and I don't expect you to have it tonight, nor am I looking for you to present on it this evening. Some information that might be interesting, it would be, I would be interested to see is, is, um, are we an anomaly? Or is this something that we are seeing in a combination of, there, there's sort of two populations I'd like to take a look at? Area towns, are they experiencing the same changes? One. Two, um, towns with similar demographics, because it's really two separate pieces, right? So we know, we know that Milford is a unique town. Um, we are in a unique position where we are not surrounded, uh, by like towns from a demographic or, or socioeconomic perspective. Um, so we need to compare ourselves to our, to our peer group in that way. However, um, we know that part of our ongoing conversation in the school committee is around school choice. This is something that's looked at when parents are making that decision, um, and they're not, because we're not surrounded by towns that are simi- that look like us. because we're not surrounded by towns that are similar, that look like us, the students are, are, they're not school tracing to Framingham, they're school tracing to Midway, which is right next to us and we know the demographics are not the same. So I'd be interested to see what that population shift. And one year does not a trend make and I, I don't want to over, I don't want to overstate this. One year doesn't make a trend, right? So it's just one year. I'd be interested to see also as we track this early, this early college program that we have, how that actually should hopefully add to those numbers of students that are heading into that four-year tract, into the two-year tract and certainly seeing that, seeing a rise hopefully in that number, that, that, that's improving those results, not, not, not having an opposite effect. So that's my only piece. Thank you guys for, for your presentation. Appreciate it. And congratulations to the class of two thousand seventeen.
Thank you, thank you. One, one thing I can offer just off the top of my head in terms of our relationship with Mass Bay and Framingham State, they, they sought us out to, to have this relationship and, and they are in Framingham and they're in Marlboro. So these grants are for schools that have specific demographics and populations of students who are either underrepresented or economically disadvantaged and so forth. So, but it would be interesting, you know, to look at the numbers, like you say, for our surrounding towns and similar, so.
And I would say if I could just jump in for a second is the, the real narrative for me is, I think the numbers are relatively consistent over the last five or six years in terms of the percentage of kids going to college. We'll have little dips and jumps, but I think the big, the big takeaway for me is that students from the class of two thousand seventeen got acceptances to more than twenty of the most highly selective colleges in, in the United States and in the world frankly. And so to me, that says that a student that enters Milford High School has an opportunity to go to, you know, the very best colleges, universities across the world because of the quality of education that's offered.
Absolutely, yes. And, and we are very proud of our, our admissions this year and our students really, they really rose to the, the highest levels of academic achievement and they were very talented students as well and, and they got so involved in the school community through athletics and music and so forth that they really, they really earned their spots in these prestigious universities, so.
The types of classes that they're taking, to the rigor of schedule.
Right, absolutely.
Good.
I'd just want to add to what you said, Kevin, and I think the other narrative is that our high school is trying to find ways to help all of our students succeed and kind of similar to what Brian mentioned with ELL not being one size for all, well, neither is continuation after high school and neither is the high school experience in and of itself. So when I look at this, I, I see a lot of kids whose needs have been met in a variety of different ways and I think you're starting to prepare them that way in the high school and getting them ready and, you know, as a parent, I think we, especially those of us who've been through a four-year college, you, you just always ordinarily think, my kid's going to go to a four-year school because that's what I did and that's what, what you expect, but that, that isn't right and for every student, especially with the costs being as it is today. So I appreciate having lots of options for our students and I think you're also doing a great job of celebrating this and marketing this. I know it's, you know, here it is tonight, but it's been on Twitter and pictures of you and I think you were in them, Kevin, of the acceptances and where our kids are going. And I think the addition of programs like the hospitality and the banking and just, I see a lot of options and I think that's, that's our job.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bay.
Thanks for coming in.
All right. So next, if I may, I would like to review the, the school improvement plan with you and I will, if I could, direct your attention to page seven where we could take a look at our school improvement plan. It is divided into the four categories that are aligned to the, the standards for school improvement and evaluation. So on our first standard one, curriculum planning and assessment, a school-wide, excuse me, a district-wide initiative is the development of our understanding by design units, establishing a standardized template district-wide where our teachers will work collaboratively to create these, these units and curriculum frameworks that contain the essential questions and elements of student learning for a particular unit and do that collaboratively for each course. So we will continue on, we started it this year, but it is a, it's a project that will take quite some time for all of the, the courses at the high school, about two hundred courses that we offer, so our teams will continue to work together. The, we'll continue with our early college high school partnership with Framingham State and Mass Bay, at Mass Bay Community College. As Mr. Bayon referred to, we have, we've had three classes this year and we actually had a fourth course that was offered virtually from Framingham State College, Calculus Four, for a group of our students who maxed out of Calculus AB and BC in their junior year. And so we partnered with Framingham State to offer these very high achieving math students, Calculus Four. We will continue an investigation. We have started to look into a student support center for all students. Currently, we do have a student support center for our special education students. We have been engaged in conversation and dialogue about the need for a support center for all students, whether that may be you need some support in writing, a support in math, but a center that is open for all students to access. The support center we have right now is an excellent support center, but it is a course in the schedules of our special education students as opposed to a cen- a center that a student could go to to get some academic support. I, I envision it somewhat of a college model where colleges have academic support centers that are open to all students. We will continue our development of our MCAS interventions and remediation courses. This year, we reinstituted MCAS remediation for students who were identified to be at risk by testing outcomes and their teachers. We ran multiple sections of the MCAS intervention class. We had our MCAS Math March Madness. We wrote a grant from the, the Department of Education that made available, available to us. So, so I wrote that grant and we were awarded the grant for professional development for teachers as aligned to MCAS. So all of that work will continue into next year to support student achievement. We are bringing back our military history course by popular demand from our students. There was a significant interest in having military history and a teacher who was very interested in teaching it. So we will be bringing back that course for the next school year. We'll continue to look at ways to put teams of teachers together for collaboration. This was, this is a requirement in our NEASC report and we have to report back in December about how we organized teams of teachers to have more time for collaboration. As you know, we have the one day a month for a faculty meeting and some department time. We organize our teachers in, in small pockets during the, the, the school day, but it's, it's impossible to take an entire department and have them off at the same period because that leads to an overload in other, other sections and electives and so forth. But we have been charged by NEASC to figure out a way to put teams of teachers together more frequently for common planning. So that will be something that we'll be looking at. And working with the video production studio on a promotional video. We have several promotional, promotional videos for our, for, posted at the website for incoming students, people who may be looking at school choice, for the community to see, but we'd like to add one for our AP courses and the AP program. Under Teaching All Students, we will continue with our data analysis to close achievement gaps, to understand where we are doing very well as a school community with academic achievement and then to understand where the gaps are and use that data to close gaps, to inform instruction. Again, going back to collaboration for teachers to look at student work and student data and, and work together to figure out how to, how to improve student achievement and really target where the time and attention needs to be. At times, it's important that we know where we're doing really well so that we don't spend our time on that, but use the limited time that we do have to target that for the interventions that the kids need and, and the way to do that is through the data. So that, that work will continue. The marketing campaign will continue, that's been tremendous success. The last, I heard, we had only twenty-six students that were going to be moving on to BBT or otherwise and a few years back, there were sixty. So we expect to see a significant number of the eighth grade students coming up to the high school and we're, we're just delighted by that. We think that giving more information earlier, we backed the marketing campaign up even earlier this year. I think getting over to see the eighth and the seventh grade students at Stacy is very successful. They came up here, we had the nighttime event of athletics and activities, so I believe all that work will continue.
Yeah, just a quick, a quick question, did we see? And maybe you've got it, Kevin, we can do this in a, a future gen item, just in the interest of time this evening, but what's the reduction, what's, what's been the trend for students going from eighth grade to other high schools? Because here's the thing, I, I know you, you commented on the BBT. BBT is not school choice, we're paying for that anyways. That's not a school choice number. That does not impact school choice whatsoever. That's a public school, the town's already paying for that, that's already a separate piece. So reduction in that number, wonderful that students have chosen to come to Milford High School versus another, which is wonderful. The, the big impact that we're sort of looking to, the, the shift that we're looking for is not a reduction in students going to BBT, it's a reduction in students that are going to, they're choicing to go to other public high schools, Midway, Holliston, Oakdale.
So I think our yield overall.
Things like that. And again, not for today.
Yeah, no, I can answer very quickly.
Perfect.
Our yield, our yield overall the last two years is trending towards a significantly higher percentage of students choosing Milford High School over every other option, whether it's BBT, whether it's, you know, private schools or whether it's other public schools.
Yeah, I just, I, I want to caution as we think about this, we've got to be careful on the narrative of celebrating sending less students to BBT. We've got to be, it's, that's, that's not the win. The win is we've got more students that are choosing Milford High School and BBT over go, overchoicing out to other high schools. The win is not not going to BBT.
We don't know those numbers until the fall.
No, no, I got that and that's what I said, I'm not looking for now. It's, but I want to make sure that we're very cautious about not celebrating not sending students to BBT. We're paying for those seats, the taxpayers of Milford are paying for those seats. That's not the win, that's not the number we're trying to adjust. We're trying to adjust to students that are going outside of Milford High School and BBT.
And, and just to clarify, in, in no way are we marketing against BBT. Simply what we're, what we're doing is simply marketing all the great things that are happening in Milford High School.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know that. Yeah, I just, that's, I just want to be cautious that, in, in, part of our campaign is not to, well, we're not going to send them to BBT. That's, that's the one I want to make sure we're, we're careful on. But I agree with you, we're, we're marketing to, here's why you come to Milford High, here's not why, here's, here's, we're not marketing against other schools.
No, and what we learned.
Marketing the positives of Milford High.
What we learned that first time when we did the marketing campaign is that the eighth grade students and their parents weren't aware of some of the programs and services that the, and that, that was, you know, that was surprising because you just, you think, well, of course, of course they know, but, and that, that was a real eye-opener. But, um, so, so to your point though, it's not, certainly, I, I know we had an anecdotal situation where we have a student, eighth grade student that had toured over here with us and met with Coach Boucher and, and I met with the student and that was a student who was slated for St. John's and that student is coming. So, so we feel that we're making some good, some very good progress, not only with, with private school choice and so forth, but I think that's, we'll get that information and be happy to present that.
And the overarching theme is that we want Milford High School to be the choice.
Right.
And I think it's, you know, I think people are really seeing all the great programs and all the opportunities that are available and they're seeing, like I said earlier, there's, there's really that pathway to kind of get to wherever you want to go.
That's the goal of the marketing campaign.
Yep, yeah.
Is retain the talent from Milford.
Absolutely.
Where else they think they want to go.
All right, and next, the bank branch will be, I have a, a little addendum on the bank branch, but I'll bring that up at the end, but just that the bank branch is moving forward and with, with your blessing, that, that will continue and we'll get the bank branch open and we're going to be running that. The, the goal is to have it open the first day of school, so we're, we're very excited about that. Chromebook cards will be coming to the high school and I thank Dr. Joseph, he's been working, you know, taking care of the bandwidth and all the things that we need to have happen at the high school in order to have wireless service so that all departments can have access to Chromebooks and, in all wings of the building. We have that, a couple of wings of the building right now, but the expectation is that that will be all wings of the building very soon. Summer reading program, we did institute a new summer reading program this year, it's been very well received. I had school council last night and the, the parents feedback I've received there and the emails I've received, not only from parents and from students, but that having over ninety different choices of a summer reading book is, has been very well received. But as with any new initiative, we'll evaluate it as we go forward, we'll see what the strengths are, what worked, what didn't, what we can do better with it. But the goal is to come, pick a day in September and all the students who selected a book, Mr. Consigli's book, Dr. McIntyre, they both offered a book. So students will be organized with the teacher, the educator who selected their book and they'll have a, a book study together during extended homeroom. So that will move forward. The senior projects increased this year, we were happy to see that. Last year, we had two, this year, we had five. We want to continue to grow senior projects. These are students doing independent studies or having very unique experiences that they are willing to showcase to the student body. So we do this during a lunch period where the students set up in the lobby of the cafeteria and we had two displays this year, two engineering displays, a robotics display and two displays of students who did international travel outside of what we offer, outside of our exchange programs. And so they, all five students showcased their work, they had displays, kids came up and asked questions and so forth. So we'd really like to grow this idea of students creating a senior project or a junior project to study, something that they were, they are very interested in. We will refine our Twenty First Century Learning Expectation rubrics to measure targeted high levels of achievement and show sample student work. This is directly from NEASC, again, something that they're looking for us to do. Our Twenty First Century Learning Expectations do have, do have a rubric, a rubric, they're looking for us to refine that a little bit more and particularly have examples of high levels of achievement. So students understand that in order to score at an advanced level in a particular Twenty First Century Learning Expectation, like technology for example, here's an example of student work that achieved advanced. And here's an example of student work that she, achieved moderate. So, so giving kids examples so that they can better identify what's expected of them in order to achieve a high level. Standard three, family and community engagement, we'll continue all of our college planning events for our students in grades ten through twelve. The new initiative next year will be an eighth grade curriculum night solely for the eighth grade. Right now, we have a curriculum night where it's eight, rising nine through twelve. We've, we're going to start next year with a curriculum night just for the eighth grade students to address those students, the parents, answer questions that are unique to that transition from the eighth to the ninth grade, especially in terms of the program of studies, in terms of freshman orientation, in terms of life at the high school and, and what would an eighth grade student and their parents expect. So that's the big change there. We'll continue our publicity of school events through a variety of tools and digital media. The academic scope and sequence for parents in rising ten, eleven and twelve. Senior week was tremendously successful again this year and we're going to continue with the senior contracts and parent meetings to ensure that the success continues and that the expectations for seniors, particularly leading up to graduation, are clear and that all students and parents, any questions they have about that are answered. Homecoming two thousand eighteen is a, is a new initiative in terms of our family and community engagement. We'd like to work to take that to the next level. We had two meetings prior to the end of the school year with Mr. Shirelli, who's the president of the Gridiron. He came in and he met with some of our staff members who are, are in different pockets with student activities where they would be involved. We're looking to get class advisors and the student leaders in each class more involved so we can really elevate homecoming to a, to, to a new place. We do need a strong committee. I think we'll, we'll be talking about different people in the community who might want to get involved with this to help us because to take homecoming to another level takes a, it takes a, takes a village, so we're going to need a lot of help with that. But I think it's important, I think it's very important to the school culture and to the community at large to, to advance the homecoming. Under standard four, professional culture, student presentations will continue for the faculty. We did invite some students to come to faculty meeting this year to do different presentations on different topics, Science Olympiad, the initiatives of the GSA, the global citizenship. So to, and keep faculty informed of all the work that the students are doing, both in and outside of the classroom. The faculty and staff discussions on teaching and learning in the Twenty First Century, our continuation with our document library that's posted in X two that has a wealth of articles on instruction, assessment, teaching all students and us continuing to collaborate on best practices and, and high levels of achievement for all students as a team. We do it departmentalized, but high schools, all high schools are departmentalized, getting everyone together as a team to talk about student learning, that is very important and we have to make the time for that. NEASC Special Progress Report, as indicated there, there are formative and substantive assessment work that we need to do. NIESC, uh, special progress report, as indicated there, there are, um, formative and substantive assessment work that we need to do, um. Time, time was a major theme in our NIESC report about figuring out how to put the teachers together for more time to create UBDs, to professionally collaborate, to look at student work. That will be something that we'll be looking at as to how we can organize ourselves and provide more time for teacher teams. And lastly, the continuation of the PBIS initiative, rolling it out slowly, um, at the high school. Um, one idea that we have on the table is a recognition ceremony nine through eleven. We do a lot of great recognition ceremonies for our twelfth grade students, um, but we're in conversation about how can we do that for our students in nine through eleven who are achieving academically and celebrate those achievements. So, that is the school improvement plan that, that I offer to you from the high school.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Um, Kevin, do you wanna add anything to?
No, wait till she's done with the.
All right, um, so we.
Handbook as well.
Well, should we vote on this and then we'll vote on the handbook afterwards?
Yep.
So, do I have a motion to approve the, the school improvement plan, motion from Jen, seconded by Scott, all in favor?
Thank you very much. So, at this time I'll invite Mr. McGillrey and Mr. Pierre Gustavo to come up, um, because they did some great work on the, uh, the handbook. Handbook's, it's not as long.
It definitely won't be as long. All right, thank you for having us. Everybody has their copy. There were just eight changes to the handbook. The first one is on page forty-three, academic eligibility. The second one on page forty-four, alcohol, alcoholic beverage and or illegal substance. The third one, on page forty-six, teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs. The fourth, the fourth edition was on page forty-seven, substance use prevention and education policy, and included in that is the Narcan language. On page sixty-two is, you know, part of the bus policy on walkers and riders. On page eighty-four is the updated student wellness pro, um, policy. And on page ninety-four is the physical restraint of students, update. And the last addition is the religious holiday observance, uh, update on page one hundred. And of course, there are, you know, other date changes and things.
Okay, has everyone reviewed those changes, any questions or comments on the handbook?
Well, so it looks like all the changes were either based on a policy change or embedded in mass general law, so there was nothing else changed beyond.
I believe the majority are district, they were district policies that we adopted as opposed to high school.
Right.
No high school specific updates this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question, in general, within each handbook, and I, I, I apologize for, are, do you generally mention specifically every, every school committee policy within your handbook?
There's a section.
Or just applicable?
The first section are high school policies and the second are all the district policies that, and so we do put them in the high school.
You do, perfect.
It's really just the applicable policies that you have.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yep, got it.
Yeah.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the handbook, motion from Jen, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, bef- before they leave really quickly, I wanna just, um, commend Carrie, you and your team on a fantastically successful year at the high school this year. And this is the last time we'll see Carrie at the school committee as well, and she's done a tremendous job of really building an incredibly positive school culture. I think she's had a lot of success in really, um, highlighting all the great things that are happening across the board at the high school, and I think moving the, moving the high school overall in a very positive direction, so.
Yeah.
I wanna congratulate you all, miss you professionally and personally.
Likewise.
Um, and I wanna wish you the best of luck in Framingham next year as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. McIntyre, I appreciate that.
The rest, the rest of your crowd, we'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, you certainly. You certainly have one of the, uh, one of the strongest work ethics I think I've ever seen in, in anyone. Um, the, the amount of hours that you put in at this high school is, it definitely doesn't go unnoticed, um, and the, the bond and the relationships that you've built with the students and the, and the faculty, um, I think was critical to that.
Absolutely, we, we actually determined that Carrie does have a twin sister.
Right.
Cause she's everywhere.
Thank you, it's, it's been a great joy and a great privilege to be the principal of Milford High School, I've enjoyed every moment and it's, um, I've learned so much from the great students and teachers and colleagues, parents and community, um, everyone that I've had the privilege of working with. It's, it's been wonderful and I, it's, it's gone by so quickly, it's nine years and it just seems like I just started and, um, and I think that's a, a tribute to how much, um, how much I've grown as an educator and, um, what I, what I've learned and, um, the support and, um, that I've had from the community, it's just been tremendous, it's been an amazing experience. And like I said at graduation, it's, you know, when you assimilate who you are into your career and, and it, it becomes, it's, it's a, it's a joy. It's just a joy and it's been a privilege to be here every day and my great colleagues and Mr. Bayon and all the wonderful teachers, it's, I, I'm so thankful.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Just want to thank you, I was lucky to have you, and I would tell you, sitting through the interviews, we had, we had the good fortune of being able to go through the interview process for, for, um, Principal Autland, he'll be joining us in a few weeks here. Um, the three students that participated in that process were, were in with Jen and I, uh, and Jim as well. And there was an opportunity during every one of those interviews for anybody to ask any questions, and one of the questions that came up very frequently is, is, um, and it was one of the standard questions as well, is, is how do you, how do you view principals, um, and their involvement within student activities outside of just the classroom? Uh, and it was a reoccurring theme that just came out, it was, it resonated with every one of those students of, I don't know, that, that guy's got an awfully long drive and boy, Miss, Miss Binock was at everything, she was always there, I, whether it was, you know, cheerleading competitions on the dark side of the moon on a Saturday morning, um, football games on Friday nights, uh, in most cases both on a weekend, um, the softball games, the lacrosse games, the swim meets, the plays, the music, I mean, everything. You, to your point, I, I mean, a twin, there had to be four of her, cause she was literally everywhere, so, uh, the best of luck to you next year.
Thank you, thank you so much, and my li- my life has been so enriched by this community, so, wonderful.
Jen?
I also wanna reiterate, um, all the accolades that you've received, they've, they've been all so well-deserved and, um, hard-earned. And I also just wanted to mention that there will be a change and change is really difficult for people and, um, while you may not have a twin, we have three other individuals that are here also and we see you at so many things and, um, I know I've heard you say when you worked with Lisa that, you know, that's your backbone really, and I've heard you say very similar things as well, so I know that we'll all be leaning on the three of you, um, to help make the transition and I know that he'll be coming in really good hands, so thank you, um, for all the work you've done and I know upcoming as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Right.
So, if I may, I just have one last request about the bank branch. In front of you is, um, I was working with, um, uh, Town Council, Attorney Moody, and, um, we need, um, an agreement, um, with Milford Federal for them to, um, begin the installation of the bank branch, and so what you have in front of you is, um, is a recommendation, um, to consider in terms of, um, having this agreement, um, with Milford Federal. So, there are two items I'd like to bring your attention to. One thing they're asking for, one change in the RFP. Currently, the RFP is for a three-year lease, um, the, Milford Federal is asking if we would be amenable to changing that to a five-year lease. So, that's something that I would ask for you to consider. Or, um, the other option they put on the table was a three-year lease with a three-year rollover at the discretion of Milford Federal. Um, but in my conversations with, um, uh, Town Council, that, that rollover would be, would need to be at our discretion. Um, my recommendation would be to, um, go with a five-year lease. I, I think the reason that they are interested in expanding the lease is, um, not only to, um, to cement, you know, the relationship for an additional two years, but this is significant cost, um, to Milford Federal for the installation and, and the work that will be done this summer. Um, so that's one, um, area that I'd ask you to consider. Under number two, and then number three, um, the, um, the lease agreement, um, and the, and to bind the agreement, the bank, um, agreeing to pay the committee, uh, the sum of a dollar, um, to, s- to secure this agreement. So, that being, um, we're in partnership with them, we're in collaboration with them, they're installing the bank branch as a learning lab for our students in business and banking management. But from a, a legal standpoint, there, there needs to be some kind of language in the agreement about the lease and the cost of the lease, if you will, so.
Ms. Chairman, if I may, the only piece on that, uh, as far as the, the three or five-year, um, no question on that. The, the question I would ask that we take back to Town Council is, is that, uh, it seemed, it struck me as odd that the agreement, that the, the consideration that would be given, and I realize that it's a dollar. However, uh, the language of it being, of the agreement being with the committee rather than with Milford Public Schools, um, if, it's something going back, you know, what, what, what logistical opportunities does that present? It's a, it's a cost that goes along with that, can we revisit, just revisit that language of have it be with Milford Public School, have the agreement be with Milford Public Schools? We being the governing body of Milford Public Schools, uh, it's, is, is a recognition of that, but having that language changed to pay the Milford Public Schools rather than to the committee directly, as well as the agreement being with Milford Public Schools, um, at the approval, with the approval of the Milford School Committee, would be the proposed change that I would have to that language, uh, other than that, I have no further questions.
I can give that to Jerry, I'll.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.
If you're gonna talk, sorry, if you're gonna talk to Jerry, um, I'd ask him if maybe it needs to be a financial commitment to bind the contract. Did, was that Jerry's recommendation that there be any type of financial?
Yes, this, this was a document that, that, um, he had said, that he sent to me, you know, based on what I was asking of him, based on my meetings with Milford Federal.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, so yeah, we'll run that by him. And is this time-sensitive in any way?
Um, I, I would say perhaps over the next week or so, because I, I know they would like to come in, you know, once school's out and start the installation. It's going to take quite a while, I think, to, to do that, so I, I'm, I think they're hoping to come in at the end of the month to start.
So, does this have to be signed by the school committee by the end of the month, or can, so our next meeting's July eighteenth, I think?
Who would be able to be hoping till July eighteenth if we're gonna adjust language?
I, I think that could cause, could cause a little difficulty.
Can we take a vote on what we think we'd like to see per- proposed changes?
You can't, you don't have it, well, in, in addition to, you can't do it with, without the proposed changes, especially whereas it's legal documentation, without Town Council laying in on, cause there may be legal ramifications to changing that language and we won't know that unless Town Council.
You know what we'll do is, why don't, I'll connect with Jerry and then we'll see if we can maybe set up a special meeting where we just.
Yeah, and just come and do that, that's fine.
We can do that in the next week.
And we'll do that as quick.
Like, if, is it all right if I?
We just need to have four members.
Okay. May I modify the RFP for the five years, as opposed to the three? Is that okay with?
Yeah, I think that benefits us.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so I'll just wait on this, but I'll modify the original RFP for five. Thank you. And again, thank you so much, I appreciate all the support over the years, it's been tremendous working with you and with the community and, um, I, I know Milford will continue to thrive and grow and, and do very well, so, thank you so much.
Thanks, Karen. All right, we have a Select PPA presentation.
I don't really have to follow that, do I?
Thanks for your pa- thanks for your patience, uh, I know it's a late night for you and we appreciate you sticking around.
I, I appreciate the opportunity to come in and congratulations on all the, we've been in many meetings, this is really impressive content agenda. So, my name's Matt Schwartzleve, I'm with Select Energy, we're a solar company based in Hopkinton, and, um, we've made a, a proposal to the superintendent. Um, I'd like to just give a little bit of background, tell you what the proposal entails, talk to you about the project, and then take whatever questions you may have. The, uh, Select answered a response for, uh, a, a request proposal for solar energy at, um, the Geriatric Center a couple of years ago. And the, um, through the process, um, with the town, we were able to, uh, come to an agreement to install a solar array at the, um, at Countryside. And through the process with, I think with Rick Filoni and some other folks involved, and this was, I'm, I'm coming in a little bit, I was not involved in that, I've been with the company three years, but, um, my colleague Steve Bianchi was involved in the whole process with the, um, Board of Selectmen and Town Manager and I think many public officials with the town. And the goal at that point was to look at which municipal and public properties could be eligible for solar, uh, systems to be installed onsite. And we started with Countryside, put a system on, and that system's up and running and, and they're saving money through the process. We met with Kevin, I don't know if it was my first meeting with you, it was the first time that you were involved in the process or not, but earlier this year, we did have a meeting.
Yeah, I think it was maybe the second meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I know it's been a, kind of a, a little bit of a journey. The, um, the proposal that we discussed at the first meeting was to, um, evaluate which public schools in Milford would be eligible, good candidates for solar arrays, where, um, the arrangement would be that Select Energy as the developer, the financer, and the installer, and the manager of a solar photovoltaic system that would go on the roof of a school and would then be wired into the school and the school would buy the electricity from the array for the term of an agreement. And so, we, um, identified the Woodland School as the best candidate to start with, it's a new building, it has a new roof, it has a su- su- a, uh, sufficient electric main service, um, and we went and did the technical evaluation and made a proposal for us, for Select to install a solar array on the roof and enter a twenty-year power purchase agreement contract with Milford Public Schools to purchase the electricity that comes off of the solar array. The, um, details around the proposal, I'm not sure if you saw this in your packet, but I'd like to just kinda recap some of the highlights are, the system will cover the majority of the rooftop. Um, it's compliant with, um, building codes, it's compliant with electric codes, safety standards, um, it's set back from the edges. It, it allows for mechanical access to the rooftop units like the HVAC and the, um, the vent systems. It would be wired down into the main electric service and then, um, National Grid would help us turn it on and then we would begin to bill you for the electricity that it generates. Um, the highlights of the, of the project itself, the economic highlights are, um, the price for the electricity that we would sell over time is ten cents per kilowatt hour. Now, what that would displace is the electricity that you're buying and the delivery expenses from National Grid that bring it to you. So, when you get an electric bill, and we were able to work with, um, your, your team Bob to look at the, um, Bob Quinn, to look at, you know, how much electricity is being used and what is your cost per kilowatt hour being delivered to you today? And we strip out the costs, there's kind of like a membership fee to be a member, to be a customer for National Grid, it's called a demand charge, so. We don't assume that the solar is going to offset the demand charge, so we strip that out and we come up with the kilowatt hour charges for the electricity and that's presently, or as of, I think the bill was in April that we looked at, Kevin?
Yep.
It's thirteen point one cents per kilowatt hour for the delivered electricity. Over time, that cost varies, it tends to go up and down with seasonality of the electricity, um, but over time it go, the delivery charges significantly increase. We expect that'll remain the case, that'll kind of up to you guys to believe that or not, but it is generally, electricity has been increasing over time. Our proposal is for the ten cent per kilowatt hour rate to remain flat, no increase during the term, so it'll be two hundred and forty months of ten cents per kilowatt hour. The system will generate in the first year about two hundred and fifty thousand kilowatt hours. When you look at the, the calculus here, um, the first year savings that we expect that this would deliver, and we're ha- very confident that this number will come true, in fact, feel it's a bit conservative, is seventy-eight hundred dollars. The average during the term would be about seventeen thousand dollars, and the cumulative savings versus doing nothing would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, the reason I'm here today is to speak with the school committee and field questions you may have about anything you'd like to discuss, the proposal, my company, um, the project, um, the economics, any policy questions, um, roles, responsibilities, et cetera. So, um. So, happy to present that to you and take whatever questions you may have.
No, thank you. So I can open it up. Any questions?
The other question I would have, just, you know, first off, thank you so much. This is something that I know has been an ongoing project, both at a town level as well as at a school committee level, where we've been, we've been talking about this for, for a while now and getting this in. I guess my question would be is, is that have you already, have you begun to look at what other schools we could possibly expand this into? So I know, like, for instance, part of our conversation with the long range plan is, is we know the roof on the high school is going to be, need to be replaced certainly well within twenty years, right? So we know we need a twenty-year roof, effectively, you need twenty years of, of useful life on a roof. So we know the high school wouldn't be one of them, although space wise would be phenomenal. Thinking about Brookside, thinking about Stacy, thinking about some of the other schools that we have, that are, have newer roofs on them. Are there other buildings that we can possibly even go through this with? Because I, you said seventy-eight hundred dollars in savings initially, over time, it's, you know, sort of factoring that out, it's gonna be giving its hundreds of thousands of dollars that we'd be potentially saving ourselves, and then ultimately in turn the town. And that's just with one building. Could we, are there other buildings that we could start to look at now? Have we already done that? Did we do that through this process?
We did not evaluate, like, system-wide, and I think the reason was, at the discussion that I attended a few months ago, when kind of got introduced to the district was, we know that this school is new, we know that it's in great shape. Let's just run the numbers, you know, do your technical evaluation, come back with a proposal, and let's consider that. So we didn't go out and do a, an evaluation at, at any of the other locations.
So I guess that would be my question for you, Kevin, and Craig and Kathy, which is, why would we, why wouldn't we look at, if, if we're gonna do it for one, and on our newest one where we have obviously the most at stake from a financial perspective, why wouldn't we look to, is there a reason why we didn't look to do it at as many schools as possible, sort of going through this process, knowing that there's no upfront cost as we sit here today? A year from now, that may not be the case, in the, in the opportunity.
I know, I know we, you know, we've, we've explored this in the past, and I, Rob Quinn would better be able to answer this question.
Okay.
But it's something I could definitely look into. I don't have, I don't have the specific answer for you tonight.
Okay.
But I do know we've, we've gone down this road in a few different places.
Yep.
And I, I know there's reasons in a couple of places for sure. I couldn't speak about every single building in the district.
I, I, because I'm just thinking that, to, to that point, okay, great, so we do it with one. Are there restrictions? Is it, maybe it's not just about the roof, maybe it is, it's, you know, is our technology and our wiring not up to the speed that it needs to be at in order to support it in the other buildings that we're talking about? Is it that there's, there's not the space? Is it just not the, I, I'd wanna know why. The high school's an easy answer. We need a new roof in less than twenty years. The other buildings, I, I, I think it's, I think it's worthy of that conversation, especially because I, I think the savings could potentially be multiplied by the number of schools.
And, and I think the roof was the primary concern of, of all the other, the other buildings, but we can certainly have a conversation with Rob just to confirm.
Yeah.
The, the other schools may not need a roof within the next five years that the high school does, but they may need a roof in ten years, right? And this is a twenty-year agreement.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, so that's why I specifically said Brookside.
Right.
As an example, which is our, sort of our next newest building, and it's still very new and still, you know, still well under the.
And I do know when we discussed it, like, obviously the high school would be the ideal setting, just because of the square footage on the roof.
No question.
Of all the buildings, but again, there's the, the type of roof and a number of other issues.
But if we could get those details, that'd be great. Yep.
And, and to take that a step further, you know, the, the alternative to putting on the roof is to have some type of solar farm, right? So is that something your firm does as well?
We do.
And I think that's a conversation that we need to have at, at a town level, is, would it be more appropriate to have a solar farm as opposed to putting these things on, on our roofs? Because it could be ancillary costs with putting them on, on our roofs, so there's a broader analysis that we can do as, as a community, I think, before making any decisions on, on this. And I, from your experience, what are you seeing with the other communities? Are they primarily putting them on roofs, or are they looking at solar farms?
Solar farms have been very popular because it's a good use of maybe space that wouldn't otherwise be productive, or, you know, it's surplus, and it's kind of sitting there. But I, I wanna call your attention to, it's a dynamic regulatory environment, right? So the two gentlemen who were here earlier today, Mr. Fat, Senator Fatman and the local representative.
Representative Murray.
We had a side conversation about current legislation before they came up, because it, it's fluid, right? There's a, there is a change in the construct of the way retail solar is being regulated and compensated. So at a very high level, this program that Countryside is under, and the one that we're, we're operating in today, is, there's a con, the regulation construct in Massachusetts is, there's this net metering element, which is managed by the Department of Public Utilities. And then there's an incentive that sits on top of it that's part of the renewable portfolio standard. That construct is being retired next year, and we're moving to a feed-in tariff program, which is a bilateral contract with the distribution company. It's less generous. The Secretary of Energy has been walking around the state proclaiming how much money he's just pulled out of the cost of the solar incentive to save high industrial users, you know, costs associated with subsidizing the incentive, right? That's just a fact. It's kind of not an opinion, but. The next program won't be as generous as this, so what that means is, we'll still go to the similar expense of installing it and maintaining it, but the compensation we get back through the state program is lower, which means our rates would be higher in this power purchase agreement type of a, a contract. So that's one thing. Second thing is, so timing would be, it would be wise, I would suggest, to do it. We certainly would be happy to, you know, perform the technical evaluations, et cetera.
Is it fiscal or calendar year that the incentives change?
So. It's based on, it's not scheduled by calendar or fiscal, Kevin, it's a, it's when the program becomes live. So we think that it's gonna go live sometime in twenty eighteen. It's called the SMART program, the Solar Massachusetts Renewable Something. And the emergency regulations were filed this week by the Department of Energy Resources. There's a ninety-day public comment period. They'll file regular, uh, permanent regulations with the Secretary of State. The utilities then have a period to submit their tariff applications to the Department of Public Utility. There's a public hearing process for that. And then they will promulgate those tariffs. We think that it's gonna take about a year, the whole thing. These projects take, on a roof, take about six months, from sign a contract, do the engineering, apply to the utility. They have thirty calendar days to respond and tell you that you may go ahead. And then we have to, we do a construction planning meeting with Rob and the maintenance team. Safety, set up, bring up the equipment, perform the installation. The mechanical installation at Woodland would probably take three weeks. And then electricians doing handwork, terminations, wiring, pulling pipe, connecting it to the main service. And then that might be another three weeks or so. All the folks that in our contract that we gave you, that we, you know, consent to Cory and Sory background checks to make sure that we're all compliant to be operating a school environment. And then we have local inspections, and then we have the utility process on the backend, and then we can flip the switch. It takes about six months, the whole thing. Ground systems go through a permitting process that involves the planning board, typically the Conservation Commission, public hearings, engineering. Typically, they're larger scale, and they require utility impact studies at minimum fifty-five business days for them to perform their studies. The scheduling of the work and the site preparation, they take one to three years to do ground mounted systems. We'll be in the next program if we were to look at a larger scale ground system, either out in the field or in a parking area. Now, it might be feasible, and we expect we're gonna have a business, right, in the next program, but we know that it's going to be less generous. So there's been a pretty big uptake over the last, really, during this leg of the, the Renewable Portfolio Standard Program, the SREC program. There's one other item around the ground mounts, and that is, the distribution companies don't like solar, right? It cuts into their business, if I may be so direct in this spirit of time. So they've been actively, although we have terrific working relationships with them, there are a lot of great people who work there, but it, it, it goes against their business model. So they've been chipping away at it to make, to make it harder, more expensive, and pay less so that it would just slow it down, so that they can adjust their business to participate in it or be prepared to pivot and continue their profitable growth in other areas. They've made ground mounts hard and expensive and not pay that well. And the policy around net metering for a standalone system, which means not connected at a building, but rather connecting straight up to like the three-phase power on the street, is, there's a rate case that Eversource, you may have read about this, and it were a National Grid service area, but Eversource is the other big utility in Massachusetts. There's a rate case currently being reviewed by the Department of Public Utilities in public comment period. The Attorney General's been acting, actively involved, as are a lot of our trade associations. Not only are they asking for a twenty-seven percent rate hike on the distribution side of the bill, we're using a three percent assumption for inflation on these calculations. They're asking for twenty-seven percent. And that, that's a sustained number. That's not the energy, that's the wires side. So it doesn't go up and down, it just goes up. But also buried in the hundreds of pages of the rate case application were to drop the net meter credit value from these standalone farms, from what's today about twenty cents, down to about thirteen cents. Because the business rationale is that they would be, all these towns who are getting these net meter credits are getting a free ride off our wires, and we wanna cut their compensation down. So seven towns in Metro West just wrote a consolidated letter to the Department of Public Utilities, arguing against that element of the rate case increase because, or compensation cut. Because towns will stand to lose, in these seven towns who are very active in, in the marketplace and have these net metering solar farm arrangements, stand to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars off their current savings model. And it, so it is, this is my opinion, not my company's opinion, but when you put a, an electricity generator at your property that's consuming electricity, regulatory hand can't necessarily reach in and change the economics on it, because you're no longer buying electricity that's coming through the wires, and you're not taking credits that are leveraging those wires. You have, in this case, a school that's using nine hundred thousand kilowatt hours a year, and you're putting a generator on that's gonna generate a portion of that as kind of a hedge against the rest of it. And you're, I don't foresee that they're gonna be able to change that and say, no longer are you gonna be able to generate your own electricity. I just don't think that's feasible. I think from a regulatory standpoint, from a, a regulated utility standpoint, that, that's gonna be off limits for the long term. I think these standalone solar farms, while they're productive, and we think, I think, and we think as an industry that it's good policy, the lobbying fight to slash the compensation is fierce, and we think that that creates volatility over the long term. So as a practical matter, putting solar arrays at the building, we think is a good long-term winning strategy. Sorry to carry on so much, but I thought I'd indulge you with some insights of the market.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. So I thought you said that the year one savings would be about seventy-eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
But then I also thought I heard you say that it would be seventeen thousand dollars per term, but that can't be right if it's a twenty year term.
On average for the term.
Per year, or for the full twenty years?
So if over the, over the term.
Okay.
It's about three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so it'll grow.
To divide by twenty is about seventeen something.
Okay.
Yep.
So if the timing, you said it would take about six months to get the panels from start to finish?
From when we, so if we were to sign a contract now, and the town council has it, Town Managers, I believe, did an eyeball on it. It's the same contract we did at Countryside, just different, it's even the same rate. From when we sign to when we think the switch will flip, we think it's about a six-month period. And we did a hundred and fifteen of them last year.
So if the dotted line was signed in July, that would bring us to February, so would there be any holdup based on winter weather, um, snow on the roof, anything like that?
Well, if we did sign, we don't think so. And the reason is, the construction isn't the tail end, the tail end of the inspections and the regulatory paperwork and the utility coming out and swapping out the meter. Maybe you asked, I'm not sure, someone recently asked me, like, what's the drop dead date that we need to sign this? I'm like, well, let's not get close to dropping dead. Let's try to move through the con, the discussion and evaluation and the contracting in a timely fashion so that we can install, you know, at the right time, which maybe it would be around September, October, we think, from a scheduling standpoint. So that should allow us to be, you know, onsite with, you know, equipment and heavier materials like panels and racking and inverters for about three weeks or so. And then just pick up trucks and a man lift for the electri, electricians to do their work. And that would take a few more weeks.
When, when you've done this with schools before, you know, just finishing up construction, I think our students are relatively shielded from that because it was a new building and they were in the old building, what, what kind of an impact would that be of day-to-day operations in the school?
Well, there's an impact. It's a construction project. I'll start there. But I'll also say that we have just completed projects at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, at the Lunenburg New High School, and at two of the Fitchburg schools. And we work closely with typically the business officer who's involved with the financials, but then the principal and the facilities director, or whoever runs the place, right? Say, when can we come in, where can we come in? We typically don't come in at all. We use, you know, an area to lay down the equipment and lay our equipment, and our, there's a lift. That's a three-story building. So it's a crane, right? And it's a drop it, and then the crane goes away. And then it's a, you know, some sort of like lull or man lift that gets us up there. If there is a convenient staircase people could use from time to time, great. But from an inside standpoint, we're usually just in the main electric room for a few days, right? Usually towards the end, but depending on scheduling, at some point on the second half of it. We do need to schedule a shutdown at some point. We typically do that on Friday nights. Everyone's at the football game, it seems, at that time. And it is in the fall. And we, you know, it's not an overtime thing for us. We just, electricians work at night, you guys typically know that, to do indoor work. But we try to be as conscientious and intrusive as possible, because there's learning going on. I'll give you an example. During MCAS, at, we, in, in these recent installations, we just didn't show up. We just didn't come during MCAS weeks, so.
Thank you. And then I just did have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in terms of the savings, and you might know this, do the savings go directly into the school department budget, or do the savings go back to the town? Or is that to be determined?
It's really a reduction in our operating costs more than anything else, because we're, it's cutting seventeen thousand dollars on average off the
Okay.
electric bill, basically. So I think from that perspective, I think we'd be able to get that savings from somewhere, you know, we'd be able to plan that savings somewhere else to the budget.
Thank you.
So be part of an ongoing budget conversation that we would have.
You're probably right about that. That's probably a more accurate answer.
So we could bypass that.
Yeah.
Saying we're gonna, someplace else gets dangerous quicker.
That's my response.
So from your, from your experience with the, how long have you been in this industry?
Seven years.
Seven years, okay. And so are, are you finding that, um, communities that do put these panels on, on roofs, are, are they running into other ancillary costs associated with it?
No.
No, so they're not running into any?
Upfront, if your building needs to be kind of tended to, I think that's an important thing to get to. So this is a big roof, and this is a rip and replace roof. This is not a, put another layer down, I don't think. I've actually never been there, but from what Steve told me, it's, it's a job, right? You're gonna have to capital plan for that.
Very specifically, you're talking about the high school.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, not with them. Hope you don't have to rip and replace. The, so these are the risks of cost creeping in. I'll just give you some thoughts around that. If we were to go onto a school that roof was leaking a lot in year, at any year. If we were to go onto a school that roof was leaking a lot in year, at any year after we're in there, we would work in very good faith to work around a schedule to, first of all, make sure that we'd be able to shut it down, deconstruct a portion of it, store it somewhere, and then have the roofer do their job. If it's a, that, that's one piece as far as like cost, you may have to replace the roof. And at some point, if we have to do that, you have to pay us to move the stuff out of there, there's also lost energy and incentive during that time. Right, so there's, there is that risk. The other risk you should think about, well, consider, be aware of, is that if, what if electric, delivered electricity prices crash in the future, and you're paying us ten cents per kilowatt hour and you could buy it from National Grid for cheaper? That's, that's your exposure, I think, and it would just be a matter of you assessing, do you think that that's possible or feasible, or to what extent do you think they'd come down and go below and stay below if they were?
Right.
And I just thought for the, natural gas is presently, maybe not this week, but in the last few years, it's been as cheap as it's ever been, and that's driving the, the retail cost of electricity, the commodity these days, and it's, you know, that is, I don't know if it could go lower.
And there's, there's clearly benefits to, to solar, um, the, the, the other concern that, that I, that I do have, and I didn't see any language in, in the contract, but a, a, as you know, this technology's evolving rapidly, right? Um, and the cells are becoming more and more efficient, um, and so we've been entering into twenty-year contracts using the existing technology that could be twice as efficient three years down the road or five years down the road, so is there any way to incorporate some sort of language that protects us so that if, if we have an opportunity to put in panels that are ten times more efficient, that we, we can do that without having to break the contract or, uh,
Yeah, um, I think, I think it's a, a good question, and I, we'll discuss it here. Number one is every project stands on its own from a financing bankable standpoint. So a long-term contract that is pretty heavily like clad, that we're putting down, in this case, maybe five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in that range, if, if there's something that comes down the pipe later and you wanna get into it, then we would be, it'd be in our best interest to try to work with you on that. But as far as financing a project today with, you'll have an option to get out, we, it, it, it won't work at the bank. Just answer it straight, um, so I think that's a challenge. Second is, I'll just tell you what my experience has been in the technology. It, it's been incrementally increasing, like, percentage points over the last sixty years. So solar photovoltaics are not significantly more efficient than they had been in the past. I'll give you an example. In the town of Beverly, Massachusetts, behind the high school, in the Carter administration, there was a grant for eight solar arrays that got installed around the United States from here to Arizona, Beverly High School got one. It's still there. They've since, maybe five or so years ago, they tore down the old high school and put the new high school up, and they rewired that solar field to go into the main service of the new high school. And the DPW department, their, their facilities group is all at the town level, and they do schools as well. He's got the application, the, the maintenance guy for the town has the application on his phone, and they're running at about eighty-two percent of its original efficiency. The panels today are about twice as efficient as like new ones, the ones we're proposing, about twice as efficient as those from nineteen eighty-one. So, there is not, there has not been any transformational techno, uh, efficiency gains or any significant leaps. There have been big drops in cost on the panels, because there's been a global supply coming out of, primarily out of China. These, by the way, are, what we're talking about are high-efficiency panels made in Korea, so they're not Chinese, they're LG brands, so we use everywhere. But I would say this to you, Mr. Chairman, that we are, our best interest is to have a good relationship with the municipal customers we work with. We've installed about almost four hundred systems so far, and we own about sixty of them around the state, and most of them are with public, cities, towns, schools, and nonprofits, because most businesses would buy them, right? They've got the capital and they can use the federal tax incentives to try to pay that expense down. But from a, um, this, you're not the first person to bring up the question, I commend you for looking into the contract, I, we can't sign off that we would change it in the future. What we would do, what we will do though, is because we're gonna be an active participant in your energy future, because we monitor the system, we perform O and M services right up the street in Hayden Row, that as new technologies come on, we wanna introduce them to customers, and I'll give you an example, right now, battery storage is starting to become more popular, and we've been, we just applied for grants for four projects, two of them are with existing customers. One of them's an indoor athletic center, they've got the kinda indoor gyms, um, and another is a, a mailing and printing house, and another one's a manufacturer, they already already have solar, and we're saying if we can put battery storage on here, we can go after your demand charges and try to reduce your peak demand expense, either in the same type of model where we own it and do like a revenue share type of it, or a discount from your savings or something like that, or you could buy it, and then we would either manage it or just service it for you. That's a current example of a new technology that's coming into market that we're going to existing customers and introducing, and like, we'd be happy to have you talk to those folks if you'd like to, just to kinda stand by the, what I'm representing to you. But from a financeability standpoint, I'm sorry, I think that's not gonna be something we'll be able to put into this contract, I hope you understand.
Yeah, no, definitely. And, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
All right, well, th, thanks for coming in, uh, I, we, we obviously have a lot more conversations to have arou, around this, and, um, and I, I don't think it's a conversation we'd necessarily table in a vacuum with just the school committee, I think we bring in some folks from the, the town side as well.
Does this require a note for us to support this, or is this just to help get the conversation?
I don't think we're at a spot to.
An informational presentation, I would say, tonight.
Just wanted to confirm, thank you.
Okay, and then Kevin, I would like to follow up with you, I guess from kinda timing and next steps and.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, great. I really appreciate your time and attention and look forward to hearing from you and hopefully doing something fun.
Thank you very much.
Um, we would be thrilled to, we do this with a lot of kids, I didn't mention this, I didn't get that on the list, is, um, the curriculum engagement and how kids and teachers and staff can say, we have solar in our building, how do we leverage this, what can we do? So we've done a number of things, from clean energy days to, um, science talks and presentations and et cetera, and we've done them with a number of schools, and we'd be, we'd love the opportunity to do it with you, I'm sure your, your teachers and folks in the schools would love to do it, so.
That's great.
Should've mentioned that earlier.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around so late.
Sure, no, my pleasure, keep up the good work, thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin, you're up. Reappointment to the, by county?
Yes, you just need to take a vote on that.
We have a vote to appoint Kevin to the Bye County Collaborative Board of Directors, motion from Jim, seconded by Ca, Scott, all in favor. All right, and Kathy?
Uh, this evening, for the committee's approval, we have three warrants, the first warrant is in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion from Jen, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and five cents.
Motion from Jim, seconded by Kevin, Scott, all in favor?
That's twice.
That's the, that's the biggest compliment he'll ever give you.
I've never, I've never grew so much hair and so many, and so tall in such a short period of time.
And the last warrant is in the amount of four hundred seven thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and eight cents.
Motion from Scott, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
Uh, the committee has the latest budget update, I have run some new numbers, um, even today. We are at approximately eighty thousand dollars remaining in our overall budget for the next two weeks, and we do have contract obligations that will be calculated, um, that we have to, uh, process, but I feel as though we are going to, uh, come in solvent and almost to the bottom dollar.
Good job.
The, uh, committee also has, just for your information only, the latest personnel update of all the hires from our previous meeting. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thanks Kathy. Our future agenda items, does anyone have any future agenda items? Solar, right, we'll add that in the.
Absolutely.
Uh, old business, anyone have any old, old business? No old business. All right, and we do have an executive session tonight, right Kathy?
Yes, we do.
So we do have an executive session that, uh, we will not be returning from, it does require a roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. And motion to adjourn, motion from Scott, seconded by Jim, all in favor? All right, thank you.